Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the school board. Will you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
And Mr. Igbal.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Tonight, we have superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford. Thank you. And Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. I'm very honored to stand before you with a student recognition this evening, and I will have assistance by Mr. Anthony Vargas, who is the supervisor of Gifted and Talented and Advanced Programs for Manassas City Public Schools. So I'm going to ask him to come forward at this time to share some exciting news with you.
Thank you. I'm so excited to stand here today and celebrate one of our students tonight, Grayson Reed from Baldwin Intermediate School. Grayson not only was one half of the elementary state first-place winners for National History Day this year, but he's celebrated tonight for being selected as the recipient for the Outstanding Elementary Student Award by the Virginia Association for the Gifted. The selection committee spoke highly of Grayson's hard work and fine character. He will be honored on their website and be in a video that will be shared this school year. I'm extra proud tonight because Grayson is able to represent Manassas City through this accomplishment because of the upgrades to our GT programming that were supported by the school board. He was only recently found eligible through our new practices and procedures. However, we can all understand why he was found eligible, as evidenced by his many accomplishments. Grayson is from a historically excluded group that is not appropriately represented in gifted programming, like many of our minority-majority division. It's my mission and our vision within the GT department to ensure all students have fair access to advanced and gifted programming as we cultivate the talent of all types of children in Manassas City Public Schools. Grayson was not originally found eligible for GT programming previously, but that fact represented an ish and obvious issue with our identification practices. We revisited many previous decisions with our updated processes and procedures, and Grayson was just one student that was clear that we had a problem on our end. I would like to read this quick blurb from Ms. Jones concerning Grayson's story, which highlights the issues and commitment of our work. Ms. Jones noticed almost immediately that Grayson's research and writing were of a high, very high quality compared to the work of the other identified students, gifted students in his grade. This only became more noticeable as time went on, and it became apparent that this student was functioning at the intellectual level of a gifted adult. Bluntly, although we had both had concerns about the district's GT identification process before, the fact that Grayson had been found not eligible struck us as a near-total indictment of that process and its outcomes, if not its motives. Put simply, a program that was not serving the student could not be described as serving our division's gifted population. Grayson's story serves as a constant reminder to us as we work to build the best possible GT program for the students in our district. We are proud to have Grayson represent us in our new, more equitable direction. He's naturally inquisitive and takes initiative when looking at worldly issues. I continue to be impressed by Grayson every single day. So thank you, Grayson, for showcasing your talent and passions. I want to also thank his teacher, Ms. Jones, who's here tonight, for being a major advocate. Also, Ms. Finnegan, tonight, supporting through Husky Pride, right? And his family, who's always here to support him. So please join me in a round of applause celebrating the Virginia Association for the Gifted Outstanding Elementary Student of the Year, Grayson Reed.
Woo! 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 Woo!
Oh, yes, yeah, go ahead. Of course. Down, no problem. Yeah, you should be proud. Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
We too are very proud of Grayson and his accomplishments. As Mr. Vargas said, we can attest to the fact that he is bright. We have seen him at a school board meeting before for other recognitions, but we just want to celebrate the great work that he's been doing and the staff that has been working with him. So congratulations to Grayson. Our next recognition tonight, we have a new family member on the MCPS leadership team. On August 1st, Manassas City Public Schools welcomed Dr. Shavice Thomas as the division's new executive director of Student Services. Dr. Thomas joins Manassas City Public Schools from Hampton City Schools and has over 26 years of educational experience. For the past 16 years, Dr. Thomas has been an administrator, serving as an assistant principal, principal and academic success coordinator. In her role in Hampton, she provided support to struggling students, assisted with attendance improvement, worked closely with social services and aided with students' learning plans. Before her tenure at Hampton City, Dr. Thomas was a special education teacher. She earned her undergraduate degree from Tennessee State University. She has a master's in special education and an educational specialist degree in educational leadership from Old Dominion University. She earned her doctorate in educational leadership from Virginia Tech. Additionally, Dr. Thomas will serve as an adjunct professor at Norfolk State University in the fall. She is also a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. As executive director of Student Services, Dr. Thomas will oversee special education, English for speakers of other languages, or ESOL department, student health, counseling, attendance, discipline, equity, and school safety. She will also oversee intermediate, middle, and high school principals. Dr. Thomas believes leaders should be lifelong learners who desire to serve others. She strongly believes in empowering and equipping teachers and staff with essential resources for success. Her family could not be here tonight, but they are watching us live in Williamsburg, so we want to welcome them to the city of Manassas as well, and I'm going to ask her to come now and greet us, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Greetings, Chair Seberg, the rest of the board, and Dr. Newman. First, I'd like to say thank you so very much for this amazing, amazing opportunity to serve the students, the staff, and the families in Manassas City Public Schools. For 26 years, I have been totally committed to student achievement and academic success for all students. So therefore, I promise to live by, promote, and support the strategic plan, the goals, the beliefs, the mission and vision of the Manassas City Public Schools, and do whatever it takes to ensure that our students are afforded the best learning environment. I truly believe that all students deserve, they truly deserve, a quality education so that they can be life-ready, career-ready, and productive citizens. So I thank you for allowing me to continue my journey to serve as an advocate for all students and serve in Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. We're so happy to have you here. Before we go on to the next agenda item, I do want to acknowledge some people in the audience. We have Councilman Ralph Smith and Councilman Tom O'Sina joining us tonight, as well as Mr. Tim DiMaria, Commissioner of the Revenue. Thank you for being here tonight. Moving along to board committee reports, Educational Support Committee, Mrs. Paul.
Chair, I am happy to report that the Educational Support Committee met today to discuss overall committee goals and purposes and to prioritize considerations. We plan to meet again the last week of September to learn from staff more about updates and how we're going to proceed.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any citizen's comments this evening? Anyone at all? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
Chair, I would like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks. That the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, tonight on the discussion agenda, we have two items. Our first will be about student achievement, and Mr. Guafeller will be presenting to us.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, Dr. Newman. I wanted to present to you a proposal to amend the current adopted 22-23 school year calendar. So what we are asking the board to consider would be to include additional planning days for teachers. And so the reasons behind that request is to support the collaborative culture featured in our K-12 instructional framework, to support our initiative, our division initiative, the cycle that works. And this will provide, this additional time will provide time and space for teachers to have data analysis discussions, to reflectively plan, respond to our student achievement data, and to provide additional opportunities to collaborate with learning teams during our collaborative learning team process. The proposed dates are situated at midpoint of the grading period to allow for corrections, to pacing, to planning, and to provide that planning for remediation for our students. And the adjustments are also to support our new strategic plan, inclusive and collaborative learning environment, and our quality workforce development. And so the proposed additions that we would ask you to consider would be, on September 16th, would be to include a half-day teacher workday. The impact that that would have on our current calendar is, it is currently a full day for students. We would ask that students have an early release day for those, for that school day. October 20th is to include a half-day teacher workday there. That is already a half-day for students, and we would ask to convert that half-day parent teacher conference to a half-day of planning for our teachers. And then February 10th is a, we're asking for a half-day for the teacher workday as well, and that too is an early release day already built in for students, so it wouldn't impact students' schedules, but it would convert a parent-teacher conference day to include planning for teachers. And then on May 5th, we'd ask for a half-day teacher workday, and that would also, it's currently a full day for students, so it would be converting that full day to a half-day for students. So we would ask that you would consider those amendments to the approved calendar, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just one quick question. Thank you, Mr. Guafeller, for presenting that. So on October 20th, that's a Thursday, it's currently an early-release parent-teacher conference day. So then the 20th, the way the calendar reads now, the 20th and the 21st are both parent-teacher conference days. So that would just be moving parent-teacher conferences from Thursday to Friday and changing that Thursday into a half-day for school and then a teacher planning day.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
Just to clarify, is that the same thing that's happening on February 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. If there's no other questions, I understand that we need to get the calendar out and to families and all that, so I think we would request second, waiving second reading. Do we need to make a motion? Yes.
Chair, I make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the amendment to the school calendar for school year 2022-2023.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens. At the school board, the city of Manassas, waive second reading and approve the amendment to the school calendar for school year 2022 to 2023. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Chair. I just want to comment, it's just a comment, that really, truly, to students and parents, the only real change, there's only two real changes, and it's just simply taking a half-day two out of the one, two, three, four. So not a large change. So from full day to half-day, only two times.
Good point. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. The next thing on our action agenda for this evening is finance and operations. Mr. Andy Hawkins.
Good evening. Annually, we set a schedule for our budget work sessions and the process going forward for our FY '24 budget. I know, it seems like we are on budget sessions all year round, right? So in front of you is our proposed calendar. It's very similar to what we've done in the past, and we'll start our first budget work session on the capital improvement plan on October the 4th. We will adopt the capital improvement plan in December, all the way to we start receiving information from the state, working on our operating budget throughout the spring, and voting on the school board budget the last meeting in March, and presenting to city council in April. And that's normally around the first or second, we're usually April the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, somewhere in that area. Those dates have not been determined at this time. So are there any questions, concerns, comments about the budget calendar?
I have a question. Do we send this calendar over to city council, or that's coordinated in some way?
So we will, we will post the budget calendar on our website. We will also be coordinating with the city to determine the exact date and time. We normally meet at the public works office, and it's generally speaking at 5:30. We just, we don't know the exact date yet, but we'll bring that back to you at some point.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? And we also firm up some of those dates at our organizational meeting, is that correct?
That's right. So if you notice, when we, when you, after, when you come back in January, you will have an organizational meeting where you'll decide who your next chairman and vice chairman, and we'll also have to determine when our school board meeting dates will be. And that helps dictate some of the dates that are on here for when the school board votes on the budget. Because if you stop meeting, you know, on the, on Tuesdays, and the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, we would have to change those dates on this calendar as well.
Okay. And we'll see this on a future consent agenda?
We will bring it back for action at the next school board meeting.
Very good.
Next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On our action agenda tonight, we have some old business, and this is designee of division superintendent to act in his absence, if he's ever absent.
Chair Seberg, when we had the organizational meeting, this was approved with Dr. Brent on it. He has since retired, so we have to replace him on the document with Dr. Thomas. And then this has to be sent to the state.
Do we need to read that resolution, or no? No, we don't need to.
It's going to be posted on the formalized note, so.
May I get a motion?
Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the revised resolution R-2022-01, designating Mr. Guafeller and Dr. Thomas to act in the superintendent's absence for the period of August 9, 2022, to the 2023 organizational meeting.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Paul, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens. At the school board, the city of Manassas approved the revised resolution R-2022-01, designating Mr. Craig Guafeller and Dr. Shavice Thomas to act in the superintendent's absence for the period of August 9, 2022, to the 2023 organizational meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Okay. Next up on our action agenda, finance and operations, authorizing the purchase of real property. I know we have Mr. Hawkins here, if anybody had any questions, but I'd like to ask Mrs. Brooks to read the resolution, please.
The school board of the city of Manassas, resolution authorizing purchasing of real property. Whereas, the school board of the city of Manassas, Virginia, the school board, has determined that it is in the best interest of the school board and the citizens of the city of Manassas, the city, to purchase certain real property having tax MAC number 111-15-00-E11, located at 8700 Centerville Road in the city of Manassas, Virginia, now it's a property, a portion of which is currently being used as the site of various school system offices, and whereas the owner of the property has agreed to sell it to the school board for the sum of $10,750,000, which is the purchase price, and the school board desires to purchase the property for the purchase price. And whereas legal counsel for the owner of the property and legal counsel for the school board have prepared that certain contract for the purchase and sale of the property, a copy of which contract has been presented to the school board at its duly-called meeting on August 9, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board hereby finds and determines that this is the best interest of the school board and the citizens of the city of Manassas for the school board to purchase the property for the sum of $10,750,000, and hereby authorizes and directs Andy Hawkins, the executive director of Finance and Operations of the Manassas City Schools, the school superintendent, and the chairman of the school board, acting alone or together, to take such actions as are necessary and/or expedient in their sole discretion to carry out the purposes and intents of this resolution, including without limitation, the delivery of the purchase price to the seller of the property, the recordation of a deed conveying the property to the school board, and the execution and delivery of a settlement statement, and such other documents as any of them deems necessary to implement the purposes and intents of this resolution, subject to final appropriation approval by the city council of the city of Manassas, sufficient for the purchase of the property and amendment of the budget.
May I have a motion, please?
Can we ask a few questions first?
Do you want to do that under discussion?
Yeah, we'll do that under discussion, I'm sorry.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve resolution R-2022-03, authorizing the purchase of real property pending final appropriation approval by the city council of Manassas and amendment of the budget.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Paul, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve resolution R-2022-03, authorizing the purchase of real property pending final appropriation approval by the city council of Manassas and amendment of the budget. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please. Mr. Hawkins, I just have a couple quick questions for you. I appreciate your coming up and answering questions again, because we've talked about this quite a bit already. There are a few concerns that have been voiced. One of the concerns is that by purchasing 8700 Centerville Road, we are looking to expand central office staff. There's a concern that it will result in central office bloat. I have not heard any discussion amongst central office staff, the board, or the superintendent's cabinet about increasing the size of central office staff. So can you shed maybe some light on that, or Mr. Guafeller?
I don't, I don't believe there's any significant, any plans in the near future for a significant increase to central office staff. You know, the building, our staff now is, our office space needs now are needed immediately. This building will handle that, and, but one of the great things about this building is that it will give the school board and the school division opportunities in the future to provide real-world instructional experiences for our children, if that's what we decide to do. Its location, the commercial nature of a portion of the building will allow the school board and school division to be able to provide unique instructional opportunities for our students.
If I could just add, one of the things that we are looking to do is to expand instructional programs for our students, and I'll give you a couple examples of that. This coming year, if you remember back, the budget last year, we, the board, approved the position of Family and Consumer Sciences at our middle school. And so we are looking at a pathway for our students to potentially go into culinary arts. And so we're looking at potentially opening a cafe for our students at our current location. We also have opportunity to expand our cosmetology program and also look at an alternative education program, and the current site will allow us to be able to do that as we look at how can we expand opportunities for kids here in Manassas City.
And that's in part because 8700 Centerville Road is, has more square footage than the old police station, correct?
Correct. We would, we have, we would have the current, the square footage to do that at the current 8700 Centerville Road, as opposed to, we would not be able to, in the immediate future, be able to do that at the current police station.
Okay. And.
Vice Chair Stevens. I just want to be more direct in the answer. No, we are not planning on making a oversight's central office staff.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everyone. There was no, the reason for purchasing 8700 Centerville Road is because it makes sense and because it gives us the opportunity to expand instructional programs, specifically in the area of CTE. So, all right, well, thank you. Those are my only questions. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any further discussion? Yeah. Ms. Chair, I do, I have, I have quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Hawkins, when, I appreciate you doing all the due diligence you have done to bring us to this point today, you and your staff, you've done a lot of work, and it shows. The BPO that you provided to us from, sorry, I have to, I have a lot. From, oh, sorry. So we did, we commissioned a local commercial firm, CRES, Commercial Real Estate Services, located in Warrenton, Virginia, very, very local. We did not commission somebody in Alexandria or somebody in Arlington who focused a lot on office buildings inside the Beltway. And the broker's price opinion pulled as many comps as they could that is most comparable to our building. I will tell you, in my research, in my discovery process, the reality is there's very few comparables, recent comparables, to this building in this area or surrounding areas. And what we have found is, through that BPO, is that the lowest square footage that was sold, was sold back in 2021. is that the, the lowest square footage, um, that was sold, was sold back in two thousand twenty-one. And it was sold on auction and it sold for a little bit less than what we're offering per square footage on this building. Um, the highest was two hundred and three dollars per square foot. So, um, we are buying this building, if, if this board chooses to, within the range that we did get from a commercial, uh, professional who, who analyzed all the comps. And that, and the two most recent sales that were in twenty twenty-two, the rest were older than twenty twenty-two. One was a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents per square foot, and the other one, which I just mentioned, two hundred and three dollars and thirteen square foot. So, uh, that was back in January, twenty twenty-two, so it was, you know, good six, eight months ago. I also want to share that currently in Manassas, there's office space on Sudley at two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents per square foot. I realized that it's forced, for sale, it hasn't sold yet, and that does make a difference. The office space on Forestwood Lane is listed for two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight dollars a square foot. Also, there are two properties that are under contract, one in Manassas, uh, for eleven million, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, and one, um, it's in Alexandria, but is the mo, it is the closest comparable to this building's size, um, acreage. And it's listed, and I just, I'm trying to get the, to find out right now what it actually sold for. The guy is telling me it's selling, it's closing soon, he's not allowed to share that information until it actually settles, but it's listed for thirteen million, seven hundred, under contract currently. There's just very few comparables out there. I want to also address the cost to, uh, oh, this is where I wanted to ask you, Mr. Hawkins. The cost to remodel the police station, I know was provided to us, we commissioned RRMM to provide that to us. Um, they're professionals, they're professional architects, they know exactly what they're doing. The price per square footage, footage, they were able to provide you with, like, three different kind of scenarios and options, and the square, price per square foot was some, one was higher, one was lower, is that correct?
That's correct, we had two different assessments done on the building. One by the RRMM architects estimators, um, they came back with a cost, which I was, um, which seemed high to me, you know, at, at the time. So we went out and we contracted with Downey and Scott, uh, as another, as an estimating type of project management firm, uh, that both the city and the schools have, have trust and who has, who've done many projects for us. They were the people who managed the project when we built Baldwin Elementary, uh, Elementary and Intermediate School. So, they came back with a cost. You know, and so we took those two sets of numbers and we asked the architect to give us their best judgment. In this marketplace, at this time, how much would it cost to renovate the police station? And they came back with eleven point one million dollars.
Fantastic, thank you. I also want to address that I spoke with a local commercial builder who clarified for me that, uh, he could not, there's no way he could remodel, um, the police station at two hundred dollars a square foot. Um, he also shared with me, I will tell you, since if, if we do choose to buy this building, he is the same builder who is building Didla, Didlake's, uh, complex, and they're one of our, they're, they're currently under lease, I think their lease expires soon, and their building is almost done, so they will be vacating as we anticipate. So I thought that was, that was just a little something I wanted to share. Okay, so, if you don't mind, I don't know how much time I have for the floor. But I wanted to also address somewhat of what Mrs. Stevens was, was talking about. I, I researched some of the history from the city, um, for the police station, for the, um, safety station. And, um, back in two thousand seventeen, they estimated their cost to be twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars. They also, during a couple needs assessments, their needs had grown over time. The building kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger every time they, they looked at the needs of what they would need to do to, to facilitate their, uh, what it is that they wanted to do. So, back in twenty, in the year two thousand, their needs assessment was that they needed four thousand more square feet. That would bring the building up to twenty-six thousand square feet. In the year two thousand thirteen, their needs assessment was fifteen thousand square feet, increasing that to thirty-seven thousand square feet. And then the price that they're, the, the last estimate that I saw that they paid for this building, acquisition, design, planning, land, was forty-nine million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And the only reason why I'm saying this is we are ten square miles and we, we don't have any, we don't have much more room to go build on. We, we really do need this space. And it's better for us to grow into it, we're going to need more instructional space, we are. And, um, it's a perfect opportunity, it's, uh, this opportunity has presented itself at the perfect time. And after speaking with some of our former board members, um, it, the, really truly initial intent, when they left their old central office, which was a trailer, they, their intent was to buy something. And, um, another opportunity came along, they investigated that opportunity, and then what they wanted to buy was sold. So, so here we are again today, and, and I think it's, it's just a great opportunity. I'd also like to address one more thing. And that is, there are two real estate, commercial real estate firms that analyze the market, the commercial market. One who analyzes Northern Virginia as a whole, the entire Washington DC metro area, and they have stated that, um, that quarter two, twenty twenty-two, it continues to bolster for office space. In Northern Virginia, there are many long-term companies who are moving their headquarters here, which will provide for opportunity for, um, space, uh, leasing space, if that is what we choose to do. Tenants are moving away from commodity buildings, and they are really truly looking for places just like this, so close to Old Town Manassas, something with amenities. Um, and so I think we are, we fit right into that mold. Seraphin Real Estate, Commercial Analysis, this was dated in twenty twenty-one, Northern Virginia. And this comp, this, this company focuses on Loudoun County, Prince William County, and Fairfax County only, not DC, Arlington, Alexandria. And, um, their overall, overall, uh, the commercial real estate was positive year over year. They did a business survey, seventy-two percent of respondents are optimistic about the near-term economic and business prospects. And they're, they analyzed eleven sectors. Office, the office sector that they studied, seven hundred and sixty-seven properties sold, and they sold at asking price or ninety-three, on average, ninety-three point five six percent of asking price. Um, the average square foot that buildings were sold for, office buildings, the office sector was two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-three cents. So I just wanted to point that, those items out as we make this decision. And, um, I think that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any further discussion?
I.
Go ahead.
I did have an additional question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins, I keep doing this to you. Funding for the office building. It's been in the CIP, correct?
Of course, so originally, when we, we have a five-year CIP, this has been in our plan for a, a number of years. The goal was, at the time, pre-pandemic, that we were going to, uh, move into the current police station, renovate it, and it was going to cost approximately two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Since that time, after the pandemic, with the supply chain issues that we're having, that we're currently experiencing, and the significant amount of inflation, we can no longer be able to, it would cost a lot more than that, uh, today. Of course, it would go up to eleven point one million from what we had anticipated, uh, in the past. So, um, we were pursuing the idea of renovating the police station until we also found out we could have a building that's twice the size of the police station, that generates revenue, that we would own, and that would provide, uh, in, additional instructional opportunities for our students. And it would be, uh, cheaper for our, uh, save money for our, for, uh, for the school division and for our citizens. So for all of those advantages, that's the reason why we are, we have been recommending that we purchase eighty-seven hundred Centerville Road.
Okay, and so the asking price for eighty-seven hundred Centerville Road is higher than what was in the CIP?
Yes.
So, that difference, where are we getting that difference from?
All the money will be with, the funding has already been allocated to the school division, and it was in our fund balance. I want to make sure that everybody understands it's clear, that we are not asking city council for any more money. The money is already within our accounts. Uh, we are just asking for the budget to be amended, to allow us to be able to spend this money in this way. We will, we are not taking any money away from any other project or any other instructional purpose. I don't want it, uh, I don't want it to be confused with the Dean School Project, has nothing whatsoever to do with that. We are in full compliance, in fact, we're exceeding the financial plan that was established by city council and the school board last year for the Dean School Project. So, these funds are already within our coffers, all that we're asking to do now is have the money properly appropriated, budgeted for us to be able to spend in this manner.
Okay, and this does not change the timeline for Jenny Dean in any way, shape, or form? Because that's been accounted for separately in the CIP.
That's exactly right, it has nothing to do whatsoever with Jenny Dean project, and is not going to affect it in any manner.
Okay, and so, cost to citizens will not change because technically we already have that money, it is already in our coffers, but we have to amend the budget to show that additional money coming from our coffers.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, hopefully that's it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spall.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank Mrs. Williams for, and Andy, for bringing us, um, all the background on the price point of eleven million for the police station. I, I have one question, since this council and leadership have taken office, has any attempt ever been made to update the agreement regarding the police station? I know that the agreement was made from a previous mayor and council, is that correct?
So the, the only thing that the school board officially has received at this point in time is a letter of intent for a lease from, uh, a prior mayor, and, um, we, we, we do not have, have not had anything formalized since that time.
Okay, and so it is safe to say that a future mayor or council could not renew the lease in ten years?
The way the letter of intent and the, the, the proposed lease agreement, it was, has been presented to the school board, is that we would have a ten-year lease, renewable for three more ten-year options. But, you know, there's nothing that we, in the agreement, that would stop a future city council from, in ten years, not allowing, not renewing the option, and the school board would have to find an, another alternative for office space.
Okay, um, I think some of the other questions that I had have been asked and answered, but one more time to clarify, um, I want to make sure that I'm asking you if we are asking for any extra money to make this purchase?
We're not asking for any extra money. The taxpayers of Manassas City will not have their taxes increased in any manner. The funding is already available to the schools, it's within, assigned in our coffers, as, as we speak today.
I feel confident that the purchase of eighty-seven hundred is a very good long-term value for our citizenry. And I see CTE, daycare, storage options if needed, um, so I think we are making a good investment, but that's me going on record.
Is there any other discussion?
One last question. Andy, thank you for all your hard work, um, on this. And I hate, I know I've asked you this before, but I just want to put it on the record. As far as the maintenance and upkeep, we have a plan in place to make sure that, uh, we can absorb and prioritize any needs for the building.
We have a great team that works for Manassas City, uh, our team, um, um, we will be able to absorb this fifty, a little over fifty thousand, uh, square feet of additional space. But I also want to, uh, express that I've had conversations with the current owner of the building, and he tells me that he will be there with us through whatever how long it takes, with no charge, to help us with a smooth and easy transition over. All of our, the people who lease, uh, space from that building, uh, pay their rent on time, they're doing, uh, great. Uh, he has, we have not aware of any issues at this point in time. He's going to assist us in transitioning over with our vendors. For example, you know, trash removal, custodial work, landscaping, those types of things that the building needs. We don't anticipate having any problem, and we feel like that we have qualified staff to be able to, um, assist or to correct any building issues that we may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Rick Ball.
Mr. Hawkins, I just have one question, uh, I was just curious. Historically, have we ever had any problems with, uh, financial audits, uh, in which the audit demonstrated that we were not fiscally sound in our decision-making?
Never. Ever.
Thank you, that's encouraging.
If there's no further discussion, I just want to summarize that, um, as a school board, we have a responsibility to consider this purchase. And the purchase benefits students, and it benefits citizens. The purchase of eighty-seven hundred Centerville Road allows for adoptions for growth. It also allows for flexibility and possible opportunities for revenue. The purchase is a fiscally responsible action for our city, for our taxpayers. And I personally will be voting in favor of this purchase because it's the most responsible thing to do. So, with the motion and the second.
I'll make a comment, so I'm not the only one who did make.
Okay, Mrs. Brooks, please.
But no, I agree that this is, you know, I, I believe Ms. Williams said, uh, a few meetings ago that, you know, the best time to buy real estate is twenty years ago, and the next best time is now. I think that this is an investment in our children, in our community, uh, in our future, that we can't afford to pass up because we already know that that has happened before. And, you know, it's our community that we want to take care of, so that's who we have in our minds right now. Thank you.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? I'm going to go ahead and repeat the motion. I have a motion and a second that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve resolution, R twenty twenty-two dash zero three, authorizing the purchase of real property pending final appropriation approval by the city council of Manassas and amendment of the budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up on our agenda is school board members' comments. Mrs. Williams, do you have a comment?
Well, since Mr. Grayson is still here, I'm going to say congratulations. And I love your story. I met a Dr. King at first, was it first night, first night out at Georgetown South, and, um, he is, his passion is helping children who don't have so much support at home, who, who, he just loves to meet with them, show them how the different ways of learning, and how many young children he is able to really pick out who truly are gifted, where otherwise I don't think the school system would ever pick them out as to be gifted. So congratulations, and thank you, and you are such an honor to Manassas City Public Schools. And Dr. Thomas, welcome, I know I've welcomed you, uh, probably two or three times now. But your resume is very, very impressive. And, um, before Dr. Newman, Dr. Bergork and I used to, uh, debate which school system was most, most like ours, Hampton City or the city of Alexandria. So I'm glad you're with us, yeah, I feel like you already know us, um, so welcome, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, again, um, I, I, I'm speaking for myself on this, I, maybe for the board, but it's very rare that we see, uh, policies, uh, and the results of those policies come to fruition. And so, Mr. Reed, Mr. Grayson, uh, I congratulate you as well, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Also, uh, we've attended a lot of things over the past few weeks, uh, from orientations and certifications and graduations and so forth. It was, uh, heartwarming to see the kids that got back to school, uh, yesterday. And, uh, greeting everyone, I just want to say, uh, let's have a safe and productive and prosperous school year, uh, starting tomorrow. And, uh, lastly, uh, welcome, Dr. Thomas. We feel like we know you already, so, uh, welcome again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks, do you have comments this evening?
Uh, I do, thank you, I do want to echo, you know, the, the accolades to Grayson, I mean, it's just amazing. I'm so glad you're able to really pursue.
so glad you're able to really pursue, you know, the things that you are interested in and, and be able to present them to the community so eloquently. Am I supposed to talk about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Also, I, you know, just congratulations and keep reaching for the stars, because you're amazing. Dr. Thomas, welcome, you're already part of our family. We're going to have to talk Tennessee, because I did not know that you went to Tennessee Tech. I didn't go, but I'm close. And also, lastly, but congratulations and welcome, school starts tomorrow, okay, first day of classes, welcome back, we're so excited, we can't wait for everyone to have a, you know, a great first day, but we also have some school speed zone changes. So the city of Manassas has voted to increase the speed limit to 25 miles an hour on Wellington Road, which is in front of Metz, you guys know that, on Hastings, and on Hastings Road near Round Elementary School. In this way, all school speed zones will be the same and easier for drivers to follow the posted speeds. There will be automated enforcement in active school crossing zones, and the safety of all the schools, the police department's plans to have school zone speed cameras in place for the start of the new school year. As in years past, city of Manassas school buses are still fitted with stop-arm cameras. So, you know, the program is to help make our drivers aware that, you know, the schools are in and we need to be safe around our students. Consistent speed zones will make it to where people all know that you do have 25 in a school zone, take care of our kids out there, and be safe. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ickball?
Hello, I just have to say it again, congratulations, Grayson, not only a Virginia History Day state winner, but also an outstanding elementary student award winner. I know I speak for this entire board when I say we are all so very proud of you. So thank you so much, well done, and keep up the great work, really excited to see what you do in the future. I'd also like to welcome Dr. Thomas again, thank you so much for being here, we're happy to have you at MCPS, and your extensive experience will be very valuable to us. And lastly, I just want to welcome back our students and staff tomorrow, and I'm just really looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ball?
Hi, thank you. As we embark on a new school year tomorrow, I'm so encouraged by the parent effort that I've seen over the past few weeks, really the last week. I attended 10 of the 11 back-to-school nights and I, I just want to offer some words of encouragement. Parents, please stay involved. We saw you this last week and you are an integral part of our team this year. Teachers, your collective passion is a worthwhile endeavor. Try to find a place of joy and gratitude as you move through each day. Students, tomorrow, try to focus on embracing our diversity and challenge yourselves to make new friendships that may not be available to you in other educational environments. Be purposeful and happy about leading our city into that future. Grayson, we're very proud of you, and I'd also like to thank Mrs. Jones for noticing and advocating for Grayson, and Mr. Vargas for helping herald and shepherd his celebration. And Dr. Thomas, we've already gotten a chance to meet, but we, we very are, we're very excited to have you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Mrs. Stevens?
So Grayson, of course, I have to say something. I'm a member of the GTAC Committee, or I was a member of the GTAC Committee, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, and I was with Mr. Vargas as the process for identifying students was revamped, because there was a recognition that many gifted students, like yourself, were falling through the cracks, and you weren't getting the education you were rightfully entitled to. And to me, that's a very saddening thing, because it makes me think, how many other Graysons are there out there who were being missed like you were? But thankfully, through Mr. Vargas's hard work and Ms. Jones's hard work and advocacy, we've kind of fixed that problem, I'm hoping, and so we'll see more Graysons in the future. I am so happy that you were finally identified as the gifted student that you are. We saw you earlier this year with your partner on your history project, and that was pretty amazing, it was quite mind-boggling actually for some of us. I'm just so excited at all the doors that have been open for you, and I have a feeling we're going to hear a lot more from you and we're going to see a lot more of you in the future. And when you get to high school, the Virginia, the school board, the Manassas City Public School School Board does have student representatives. So keep that in the back of your head for when you hit high school. For some reason, I feel like you're one of those people who belongs up here with us and that your insight will be very helpful to us, so congratulations, good luck, I can't wait to see you again and see all that you're going to do in the future. So kudos to you, kudos to mom and dad for standing by their son, and to Mr. Vargas and Ms. Jones, because it takes all of us, it takes a team. Parents, student educators, we all have to work together, and when we work together, this is the result we get, outstanding students who are successful in every way. And like everyone else has said, tomorrow's school starts. So this is to everybody who commutes, and most of us here in Manassas are commuters in some way, shape, or form, be extra vigilant tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, and from now till the end of the year concerning students waiting at bus stops. We have students who will be waiting at bus stops in the dark in the morning, please be mindful of them. Be mindful of the students who are walking to school, be mindful of our new drivers who will be driving to Osborne tomorrow, driving home from Osborne tomorrow. Be prepared for them, be prepared for some additional traffic as we deal with school buses and parents driving and new drivers out there. And remember, it is Virginia law to stop for school buses that are loading and unloading students. We have cameras on all our buses that will take pictures of you and your car if you choose not to stop. The only time you don't have to stop is if you are on a divided highway, so please. Safety of our kiddos tomorrow and the rest of the year is utmost importance, and it starts before they even get in our buildings in the morning. So thank you, and good luck to everyone tomorrow, not just our students, but moms and dads, aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas, who are saying goodbye to their kiddos, and to all of our employees, because as we recall, with our strategic plan, all of our employees are educators, and it takes everyone. So good luck tomorrow, everyone.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll be brief. I did want to mention that before I was on the school board, I was a parent representative to the Virginia Association of the Gifted, so I would go to their statewide meetings. And so I know what goes into that selection process for the students, and it is amazing that you have received the recognition that you have, and well-earned, thank you. And then just briefly, I want to mention tomorrow, hey, turn on your TVs, we're going to be on Channel 4, we're going to be on Channel 7, hopefully all good news, just featuring Manassas City Public Schools, because we are going back to school. So thank you all, have a great day. Any students in the audience, please get your rest tonight, say hello to your teacher in the morning, and have a great day and a great school year. May I have a motion, please?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session as exemption for open meeting allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for the following purposes, 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personal Matters, 1 PRS 2223-0047, and number 2 PRS 222-2223-0048.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Ball, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for the following purposes, 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2223-0047, and PERS 2223-0048. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero, we are in closed session.